6:04 and the meeting's called in order. And first item of business is the review and the adoption of the agenda. You've seen the agenda. What's your pleasure?
It will be adopted.
I have a motion to adopt the agenda as published. Is there discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Better not be.
Oh, really hard to reject the agenda.
Well, I mean, really. We don't want to drag this out, you know.
What's the agenda? I don't work at that.
Uh, second item on the agenda is the, uh, is action on the prior minutes? I have sent you the minutes of October 7th and I need a motion.
I will we accept the minutes from the prior meeting.
I have a motion to approve the minutes of October 7th. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Uh, coming to all business, uh, we will sign. Uh, we already did, I guess, for the month, uh, except for you, John. Um, we signed the subdivision permit that we approved at the last meeting, as you remember. And Mr. Brown brought his Mylar for us to sign and that's uh, what we've, we've already signed as well. So we have done that, but all business. Uh, another all business is, uh, we will continue a preliminary review of
A different side.
Of a four lots of, here. On a real rich. Thank you.
That's the big one and like this.
Well, we had the big one, you think. And, uh, tell if you may remember
Okay.
The, uh, the, uh, you turned the last meeting because one of the parcels did not have the required furniture. And just want to hear that was was at that time was 180 feet, 80 feet and it requires 200, 200 feet furniture for a legitimate subdivision. So we have the new, uh, MAC that conforms to, uh, to requirements. And, um, there were the, all the other, uh, application, uh, requests where I think they were we had the proper, uh, application to make sure. Maybe I'll just believe her. Right. He wants to do a four lots of division. Uh, and these are the lots here. Now, uh, talk to me about this one here.
Sure. I'll, I'll just briefly describe the whole thing. These were four individual lots already that Mr. Wender bought in 2019. And he proposed selling them to me as a group. But I offered up to him that he should divide off and keep this little piece to go to his son Josh's bigger piece to have a more gradual road put in. I could build that for him into that piece to help that be more, more usable year round. And then I told him if I bought it, I would be interested in dividing off a piece here for the guy I'm building a driveway for. It's going to go to the house, Dean Patterson. He's from Pennsylvania for a buffer because he wants to be up pretty high on the property to get a nice view. This is a two lots that are combined as long as he owns. He used to be Nicole Crater. And they're going to build not next year, but maybe a year out. So he said, well, maybe I could divide that off and do it and say, and then he could take the funds he'd get from this and lower the price he was asking for the remaining. So that's why he was subdividing this off just to sell it as a buffer to Mr. Patterson.
Mm-hmm.
And then my wife Bridget and I are going to buy the remaining four lots. This would be combined and become one lot. And then that's a lot in this lot. Again, they were already four individual lots. And this is just changing to so Mr. Wender could keep this piece, transfer it to his son for that lot. And then carve this piece off for, for Mr. Patterson to have a bit more of a buffer for his house site.
Yeah.
That was the purpose.
Uh, well, that presents us with a slight problem. Because you're creating two lots that were not legal. Because for instance, this one here, you're creating a lot that is landlocked. We cannot permit that unless the permit very specifically says it will be attached to this, this piece of property.
I believe that's what it was.
Well, that's what the permit will say.
Right. That's, that's me at that because that's the
But what I'm saying is that the permit will say that. And you cannot do anything with that except attach it to this property.
Yeah, that's what they had planned to do.
Yeah, that's fine. I say, I want to be, I want to be clear though.
Yeah.
What we have to do is make sure that we don't create something that people can't get to.
Right. No, this was, this was just for the purpose.
Yeah.
So this would be, this boundary line is going to be eliminated and this would be that Mr. Patterson, there you have a person sale.
This, this piece of property here, that 2.75 acres
Yep.
will be attached to a neighboring property, an adjoining property.
Yeah.
Okay. And that would, that's what the permit will say.
It'll still be its own lot, but it'll carry with it.
Well, it, it won't be, it won't be a landlocked lot because this lot is accessible.
Right. No, I know, but on, um, hypothetically, somebody could build a, uh, what do you call it?
Oh, a right of way.
Right of way. But if, we're not saying this isn't a parcel.
No, no.
That it is part of this. We're just saying that it lives.
It cannot exist legally without being attached to an adjoining property or you're right.
Or, or
Or having a, a heated right of way. Okay.
But isn't this going to be eliminated?
It is. And that's what they proposed to do. So this would just become part of, all of this would become part of that.
Oh, well, that's different then.
The same thing, of course, is with this.
Exactly.
If you're making this lot go away, it doesn't have to be.
That's right. This becomes part of, he has two lots and it's one that he's using.
Okay. I just want to make sure that you all understand what, what the limitations are.
Well, the permit also specified that this boundary is to be eliminated in this parcel and that will be included here because this parcel right now, the way I see it, has no road, road front.
Right. That was the whole premise.
So I'm, I'm trying to understand how it all works.
Because this becomes one lot.
So this in the permit will say that this boundary, this become one lot.
When they re-describe it. I, I think you're right. I hadn't, I hadn't thought about that. Yes. Yeah, I, I appreciate your calling that out.
Yes.
Because that one would, would be an illegal lot because it wouldn't be usable.
Right. So in that permit is just going to be that this, these two lots will become one.
Right.
But again, the, the full intent was to have that become one and then this is an individual one and then
Well, I, I just want to be clear because when I write the permit, I need to, need to color all those
Of course.
angles, right? It'll take me a while.
And the same with this little one. That won't be its own thing. Not combined with the, Josh and the
The, the permit will say, will deal with all of it.
Sure.
And, and as one. And then it will say there's one, two lots. And this is a, another lot that might be combined.
Yep.
And then there was this lot that's, that's not a legal lot, but it will be, uh, attached to something else.
Yeah, added to the, to the
Core piece. To provide, to provide access.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay. As long as we all understand what's happening. Okay. Uh, if we're sure we have a good understanding, I will ask Jonathan to warrant a public hearing to deal with that because we do have to have a public hearing to invite the public to make comment and, uh, and, uh, see what they have to say about it. And, uh, then we, we will have the public hearing, uh, in December.
Yeah, I think it would be the 6th.
6th December. And then, uh, we'll see where that goes. Uh, your permit probably won't be written until probably January sometime. Okay. But, you know, it'll take me a while.
Sure. I'll let Norm know. Norm wondered, he's the owner. We're, we're buying it from him. It wants to go through.
Well, I, I talked with him, uh, when, when he first brought it in, I talked a little about it.
And this is my first foray into anything like this. I own my own home. I've never bought right in or tried to develop land. My intent will be to have house sites for each of the three of these and maybe sell one in a few years when the Vermont capital gains goes away. And then with that money, maybe build a house on the next, and then maybe build a third house. So, you know.
I guess we, we need housing.
Well, I mean, the, 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 for all the assassins, it's just now the, the, there's something
Okay. So we will, uh, we will have a, a public hearing in December.
Yes.
On that, uh, application. And then we will, uh, deal with the, uh, writing in the permit and sometime in January, they'll file it. Jonathan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it. All right. Thanks. You're truly blessed.
We'll see you next month.
Okay. And that is all the business I have for you people. And, uh, unless there is something that, uh, anyone, our, our visitors have comments?
Comment and questions.
Well, there is on them. I, I have a legal obligation to have a public comment period on every agenda. We are at that point.
Okay. Um, I'm Shayna Kalatsky. I live on North Hill Road. This is
Mary Cunningham. I live on North Hill also.
And we had, um, originally visited the select board meeting and they said, you should really go to the zoning board to ask these questions because that, their expertise. So there is a property near us at 2267 North Hill Road. And we were wondering if there had been building permits filed for the addition of the garage, the bathroom and the kitchen that they installed. The wastewater, the electricity. Um, Jeanette did confirm that no permit was, um, obtained for the sewer system. And that the existing sewer system approved plan for the property was a mound system, which it does not appear that the property used and that current sewer is right next to Mary's well. So we're concerned that if it does not perform the way it's expected, especially with the weather, that the sewer overflow is going to run down into our yards and possibly contaminate Mary's well. Um, and we were also wondering if a certificate of occupancy was obtained because the property is not only being used as a residence, but it's an advertised Airbnb that says, oh, be careful about the sewer in their ad, which makes me, the septic, which makes me very concerned. And then the property is actually owned by a car dealership in Florida. And I didn't know if they applied for a conditional or we didn't know if they applied for a conditional use, uh, variance because car
Carrier.
Carriers have delivered trucks to the property next door to deliver cars that then they line up along the road with for sale signs. And people come to do test drives
Yeah.
on North Hill Road. We tried to be a good neighbor and say, what's going on? And, you know, we were not really met with the most friendliness and we sent our most diplomatic mayor, uh, Steve Seguidi over. And the gentleman who was at the property said, I'm just looking for a loophole to do what I want to do, which was like, okay. And then, you know, we had another incident. We were trying to be a good neighbor during the drought and the burn ban. He's out there with a fire starter, burning things. And we know what happens to houses that catch fire on North Hill Road. They no longer exist. And Mary went next door to say, you know, we're the burn ban. This could be very dangerous up here. We've had a drought. Oh, we had some rain. I saw it on the camera and continued to burn. We did call the fire department and they came in full force, um, with the truck and a second vehicle to take care of the situation because, you know, we were worried the sparks are flying. It could start a fire. So we just have a lot of concerns about did things get done the way they should? Are, are wells in our property safe from sewerage?
Yeah.
Um, I, I, I Right. Um, the thing that I do know is that this was a concern that was brought to the administrative officer. And the last I heard from him was that he had spoken to the owner. And that there was no problem. The, the, the cars would disappear. And that was the question, that was the question I think he, he was asked to, to find out about whether, what all those cars were doing. Uh, one of the other things were mentioned to me anyway. Um, but, uh, one of the reasons we have an administrative officer is for them, for him. Dar to make sure that all of those things happen. If he's, if he's doing things that he's not supposed to be doing and has no permits for, uh, Dar needs to make sure that he knows and stops what he's doing. And if he's not, then the select board have to hire a lawyer and, uh, file for an injunction. To stop whatever he's doing. But it becomes very, you know, it becomes expensive. It becomes, um, a really bad issue. But, uh, as a, as a, as a board, as a we have administrative officer to do this stuff. Uh, and I think what we need to do is make sure that he does it. And finds out. And he needs to make sure that the, and I will go to the select board as well next Monday, I guess. Next Monday? Yeah.
Yeah.
On the 10th.
Yeah.
And, uh, to make sure that they are aware of, of, of what the concern is. And maybe you should show up too.
We did show up. That's the thing. We were told to come to you.
Yeah. Cause you're telling us to go back to them.
We will go back to them and tell them what, what the real story is.
Yeah. And Dar was notified about the illegal septic, or I believe it's illegal septic? Yes. Because he talked to the previous landowner who had the whole mound system and it was also cost, it was very costly.
Yes.
And that was one of the reasons why they decided to move somewhere else. But they left a whole plan and I did file, I was told to file a complaint with the environmental Yeah. Oh, okay. Which, excuse me, but
Well, that, that is helpful because
That's what
Once it becomes something that, uh, that people and agencies have to, have to act on, it's good to have a, a paper trail, you know. So, uh, uh, and whatever else you could file, it, it, just do it.
Yeah. Uh, The only thing they had a building, a building permit for was the addition of a new garage on the old garage.
So there's no building permit to have the bathroom and the two bedrooms upstairs?
Well, that, that's inside. So it doesn't change the footprint.
Got it. Okay.
So you wouldn't need that.
Okay.
Well, what I, what I did is because they have basically remodeled the garage as to a house. It's been I went through the system and it's been changed over to a house from a garage and square footage now reflects that.
Well, I, I think, well, I, I, I'm going to call Dar to, to find out what he's, what he knows. And what, uh, what he thinks we can do. Um, but if, if that's not satisfactory to the neighbors, I think we need to make sure that, uh, that if, if there is illegal opera, uh, uh, activity, we need to make sure that that doesn't happen or it doesn't continue to happen.
I think it's been about two months that Dar, you know, became, or, you know, we let him know about all of these things. And it, it's not the first time that the car carrier arrived with the cars. And he told Dar, and I, I'm going to be honest, Dar downplayed it and was like, oh, it's no big deal. He's just selling some cars. If you're selling a personal vehicle, and we've all done it, Ford had his boat there forever. That's one thing. When you have a car carrier deliver cars and line them up with for sale signs and he told Dar, oh, I'm just, you know, waiting to bring them someplace. Well, then park them in the back so we don't have to
Yeah.
look at them. And why are people test driving? So there is not a forthrightness.
Well, I, I think, I think I will need to make sure that Dar knows that I'm concerned that the board needs to, needs some answers. And that he needs to make sure that the select board needs, uh, is informed of what the situation is.
Yeah. And, and the sewerage is probably our biggest concern.
That is one of the things that, uh, especially with, with rentals. Uh, if you have a rental that's got four bathrooms, you need a septic system that's 4,000 gallons large. Okay?
Oh, I understand. And I know right now there's like, um, in the, uh, there's the well. That's another story. And then, um, across from the driveway, you can see where there's a cap, like a green cap in the ground.
Oh, yeah.
And that's all I see. I don't see a mound system. I don't
And we didn't see anything get constructed.
Yeah. It's almost like by the dark of night, they
Well, the thing is, if it, if there is
The waste water permit was
If it's, if it's designed to, to be a mound system, what that means is that there is not enough ground to do an in-ground system.
Right.
Or the, the ground is unsuitable. Okay.
And there's a ledge on that property.
Top ledge.
Yeah. So I, uh, I, I will call Dar to get things started. Uh, but again, as I said, I will, I will come to the select board meeting and and find out what it is that they know and what they want, what they're expecting to do about it. Because, uh, as a, as an enforcement, if our the, if our officer can't make them stop, we have to get bigger guns. Right? So, uh, um, but that's, and that's where we go. Okay. And I'm, I'm glad you came to inform us.
Yeah. So, yeah. I just need to, so you went to the select board and they sent you here?
Mm-hmm.
And we shared all the same information. Um, I mean, I even have like the name of their car business in Florida. Um, and they said, no, this is really not our thing. You have to go talk to the zoning board.
It's, it's, it's a, it's a good way to not have to deal with it.
It was a lot, as you can tell from your reaction.
By making sure that somebody else is on the hook. So, um, but as I said, uh, as far as enforcement is concerned, our administrative officer needs to take the lead. And if he cannot prevail, then it is the select board that has the power of the purse.
What's the, uh, what, is there like a tentative timeline in all this? Because it sounds like it could be catastrophic for these people.
I, I don't know what the timeline
Into our discussion.
Yeah.
There is
First to where?
If there's one, there's one tucked in the back.
If, uh, if they have to go to court to get a, an injunction or a stop order or whatever, the courts will take their time too.
Yeah.
You know.
We had a system in the past where there was a fine connected that accrued daily.
Well, we still have
In that situation here, that you do what we tell you by such and such a date where the fine starts. Of course, they, we're asking for it with a lawyer.
$50 a day is what the fine is.
That's all.
Yeah.
So obviously, I'm just kind of, this is
Yeah. I'm sure In the 40 years I've been here, we've, we've done that one time.
Well, in the 10 years, 15 years, whatever, I've been here with the same one.
Well, so, so I, I, you know, I, I really feel for you, but, uh, this is not going to be an, an easy thing to, to, to fix.
No, but I appreciate you listening and hearing this.
The owner is
Over to you guys.
Doesn't, doesn't want to cooperate.
It's also an Airbnb.
Yes.
Right. It hasn't been rented yet, but it's, it's
And they actually, in their advertisement, they say to be cautious of the septic.
Yes. We have a septic
Well, that's, that's the main, that's the
That's the main.
The stake makes, makes the rules.
Right.
That if you have a third bedroom, you have to have a thousand gallon disposal system. Right? That's it.
Yeah.
So if he's got four bedrooms.
Two bedrooms, but still.
Two bedrooms, a bathroom and a kitchen.
Well, then he needs, he needs at least a 2,000 gallon, it's just a spiral staircase.
I'm glad you updated the tax card because that was also frustrating that he was only being taxed as a garage.
Garage?
Yes.
Well, that's what it was. It was a garage.
And what is it now?
It's a house with a house, as far as I'm concerned.
Oh.
So I've, I've updated everything. They're gonna, they will get a change of appraisal though, so they spring.
I mean, he, he can't, he can't have two living units on the same property.
No, it's just, it's just one living unit now. It was basically a garage with a little upstairs area.
Right.
But there, I don't think there was anything ever installed and they built a new garage and converted the old garage into a house.
And they got a permit for that garage.
For the addition.
He did talk about flopping another Jamaica cottage on the property.
Right.
He did tell an neighbor he wants to do that.
Yeah. Well, that was our other concern.
He said he's in the wilds of, uh, anywhere.
Less room for his sailing and selling vehicles, more for Airbnb.
Yeah. Yeah.
Maybe they don't have vehicles, the more septic in your system.
Do they have enough parking spaces for the employees? Look at the zoning board. I don't know.
We thought.
We have regulations for all that, you know.
Yes.
And, uh, somebody is going to have to make sure that he knows that he can't do everything he just wants to do because he wants to do it. That there are regulations and, uh, if it takes somebody with a black robe to tell them, then it's becoming, it, it will become expensive.
Right. And it's sad he's not listening. I mean, even the fire, I, it was back last April.
Yeah.
He burnt, came up and burned for two weeks and I finally called the fire ward.
Yeah.
And I said, this has been going on. And the fire ward spoke to me, didn't, had no idea he needed a burner. But obviously he disregarded that again. This fall when he burned again. Yeah. Um, on a same property, different issue. Just wanted to put it out there. Uh, now while we're at it, um, 2023 in June, the, the prior owners of the lots, they dug a well on that property. And I've since learned that you're not, you're supposed to have a septic before you dig a well. So I guess it's a mute point, but the overflow from that well, where they, I think it's in the same vein as mine. I used to have an overflow on my well. I've been up there for 32 years and that's gone. And now all the excess water is, they've channeled it into the ditch in the front. And it's heading down the hill towards my driveway. So now there's like a lot of water that sits right by my culvert. Some of, you know, it's making its way through very slowly, but there's a lot of water there. And I just wondered, is that my problem? Do I need to dig that deeper? Is it okay to just get a, put a well in and make the excess water some, the neighbors' problem? Do you know what I mean?
We, I don't recall that we have any regulations about, um, digging a well. Um, I mean, personally, if it is a shallow well and it works for you, that's fine. Uh, but shallow wells are, uh, susceptible to change. If, if the, uh, the, the, the level of water rises or falls and stuff like that. One of the reasons that I have a deep well is because I didn't want to deal with that, you know.
I have an Artesian well.
Yeah.
But it just seems like they're in the same vein is the best way I could put it. So and the excess water is just in a different spot. And I just, just like, so just wanted
Uh, we will, we will go bring that thing to the, uh, to the select board again and make sure that they know. Our first line of defense is the, uh, the officer that, uh, that we have appointed. So
You feel like you brought it up and it was
Well, then it becomes, uh, something that the select board have to decide how to spend their money.
Thank you for listening.
Yes, thank you.
Sorry, I can't be much more helpful.
No, but you heard us.
Due process, Ben.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, that's good. They have paper trail.
Right. Right.
Well, and I think you're going about the right, the right way. Because, you know, the more people know about it, the more interest you'll, you'll generate.
Yeah. And many more of our neighbors were here for the select board meeting, but we'll let them know that, you know, we should
Oh, yeah.
I, I think that's the most powerful
Yeah.
thing that you can do is show up in person
Yeah.
and say, what are you going to do?
We got elected.
But they are interested and they, yeah.
Yeah, uh, I'll, I'll do my part.
I think you're joking.
Have a little
Want the little note sheet with all the information on it?
Um, I'll tell you what. I'll tell you what, um. Let me give you my card. And I, my, my homemade card and you can send it to me. I'll ask you for it.
Okay.
You can send it to me on, uh, on my email.
Okay.
When I need it. Okay, I've got too many things going on.
Well, we'll get there and just sit there until you're ready.
Oh. I'm too active for that. My son says he's gonna slow down some. Uh, uh, my, you know, but uh. He's out in Seattle, so he doesn't know what I'm doing.
We won't tell him.
Mm hmm.
It sounds like North Hill has its own um, representative government. And uh, these are the.
And that's.
They represent North Hill, but you know, the citizens of North Hill need to come out in force.
Absolutely.
Look at them.
That's the most, that's the most telling thing that happens when you, when you show up and, and enforce. Then they, they start paying attention.
When is the select board, is it altered next month, right?
It's uh, the next select board meeting is on the tenth. If I remember, next, next Monday.
I believe it's next Monday.
Okay. Yeah, they got, they got Jason Rasmussen scheduled for something.
Mm hmm.
As you want, as well. He's gonna have a busy day.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Yes, do you want us to put the chairs down?
Okay, and uh, and I thought I had no other business for you. And uh, let's see, let me.
Bye, John.
Good night.
We make an executive decision and make, uh, join the, adjourn the meeting at nine, uh, six thirty five.